Okay, I show 7:00 PM. Let's all rise and pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. It's March 9th and it's about 50 degrees in Red Hook today in the year 2015. I think maybe we could knock on wood and say the terrible six weeks or eight weeks of the abrupt short-term winter is over. I don't think we've seen a colder one or a snowy one in that six-week period in quite some time. It's unbelievable, but our streets are clean and they're melting and now we just have to think about drainage, I guess, and so forth, but it'll help us design where to put our next set of catch basins, right? But anyway, welcome, everybody. I thought what we do is we open, let's review the minutes, and we have Judge Tribozzer here tonight to give us an update on some of the grants and so forth. We'll get him in and out so he can go back to administering justice in the village. But we did have three meetings this month. I guess it's three since the last. As you all recall, we put off our February initial Monday meeting because of the bad weather, so we had a regular board meeting on February 19th, so that's why the date looks a lot of sequence to normal dates. I know as we're reviewing years, just 10 years from now, we can understand that. Then we had a budget workshop on the 25th of February and March 4th. So there's three different sets of minutes. I've perused through them and there's a lot of minutes in, what is that, like 18 days or 19 days since we had our village board meeting. Mayor, you found them okay? Any other additions, alterations, or corrections? Is there a motion to accept the three sets of minutes? Is there a second?
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, like we said, we have Jonah Tribozzer here, our village justice, and we've got you on the agenda, but let's put you first and move on out of here with you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. It's always a pleasure and a delight to appear before you, especially with some good news. Once again, we've been able to obtain a grant for capital expenditures to support the court. As the board is well aware, since coming on the bench in 2007, Judge Jeffrey Martin and I have been able to obtain over $75,000 in grants for both the town and village courts, the lion's share of which has been spent right here in the village court. In fact, just about everything in this room, from the microphones that are before you to the lighting system, to the chairs, to the tables, have been paid for by these court grants. So we're delighted to be able to bring this kind of money in at no direct cost to local taxpayers. This year, the grant was $804, and it paid for the cart that was holding those folding chairs there. The folding chairs were just freestanding and we were concerned that they could fall over and somebody could trip, so we got a cart. And that was at the suggestion of Deputy Mayor Kovalcek, and I think that it certainly neatens things up. We also, because of the ever-expanding caseload of the village court, ran out of file cabinet room, so we were able to get a file cabinet from the grant again at no cost to local, no direct cost to local taxpayers. We're hopeful again next year to reapply for a grant. I know that we need a dehumidifying system down where the court records are being stored, and that's going to be the goal next year, to try and get a grant to pay for that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions members of the board or members of the public may have.
All right, Judge, as far as the grant, are the grant amounts always just for capital type items, nothing for staffing or that kind of thing?
The only thing that they'll allow under the current rules, of course, it's always subject to change, would be for services such as bulk shredding. Let's say we wanted to convert our files to digital form. They would pay for a service to scan the records in and then bulk shred the confidential records that have been converted into a scan system. But, for example, to pay for our court officer or the court clerks under the current rules, they won't allow that.
Thank you. I thought one thing, maybe with our new portable chair stacking machine over there, we should retain one of our highway guys. I think it's a little too long. I wonder if we could have...
We tried.
Oh, yeah? Can we cut it and weld it?
Well, it either, it came in two sizes, too small or too big. It aired on the side of too big.
Well, I've seen we have our crack welding star over at Highway Garage. I thought he might be able to cut it and shrink it about three feet.
The court presents that to you, Mr. Mayor, for whatever purpose you think is appropriate.
Okay, along the weekend.
But you have, you have here a draftsman and an architect. We'll let them put their heads together and decide on that.
From a purely lay perspective, it's, could be shortened a little bit, but we'll talk about that. But thank you. Any other questions for the judge?
Pleasure, as always. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Jonah.
Take care now.
Let's see, we would then move to the Treasury report. Cindy, are you ready to go?
I am. Fund balances, general fund, $178,831.23, water fund, $68,735.54, trust and agency, $15,320.55, materials management, $5,636.85, petty cash, $96.26, Village Green, $3,736.88, hard scrabble, $1,594.5, health insurance, $3,064.64, and Capital Project Zero. Monthly expenses, general fund, $208,467.11, water fund, $51,185.64, trust and agency, $15,320.55, and materials management, $4,0265.41. Just note, the general fund is high. That includes Trinity for 2014 community block grant for Wells 15, and we also made another payment to the firehouse, so it's not usually that high.
Okay, and just to explain what changed by Trinity, that's, remember our block grant project for Well 15, the block grant reimburses us the transaction to the money, but it is in our general fund transactions.
The same amount of money came in and went out.
And today is the 9th of March, like we said, and as we all know, our fiscal year ends May 31st, so we have the full month of April, the full month of May to go, and three weeks or so in March. The way the village works, a bulk of our revenue comes in through the property tax. I'd say it's about 65% of that. That's the funding level, and then we get other fees ranging from sales tax, mortgage taxes, and things that make up and round up the rest of our budget. This is the time of year where the departments, we monitor them all year, but we have to be careful this time of year because we're toward the end of our cash flow and we need to keep everybody on the straight and narrow as far as expenses and so forth. I know Cindy was doing some projections where we aren't now with budgets and anticipated expenses. It's a good thing it's more than fun to say the weather broke, but I think having it a little warmer, it looks like the trend is to stay warmer, we can forget about certain costs as far as snow removal and some of our heavy equipment costs, so that's a good thing. I know you were doing some projections, and did you have any thoughts you wanted to give to the board?
Just that the village is financially doing very well. I think I projected $275,000 still yet to come in for income, and $98,000, these are the big items left to go out, so the fund balance is looking pretty good.
Which is good. I don't see any reporters here tonight. You know, like we said at the prior two meetings, we still are on scoring 46.3 points on the controllers fiscal stress list, which puts you susceptible to fiscal stress, but like we showed those graphs, that graph on the wall again, it's, you can see the change in direction, the climb, the positive territory that we're making. So that's the actual facts, that's, those are real numbers there, so that's all good information for all of us to know. As far as the budget, we've been in Wednesday night meetings. The tentative budget is due to be submitted by March 20th. We're on our way. We had, we got through our projected revenues the other night and we started to attack some of the expenses. We're not done with expenses, so we will meet again this Wednesday, but then we'll postpone the one next Wednesday because that's election day in the village, so the 18th, we will not have a budget meeting. So we'd like you all to show up again this week. Is there a motion to accept the Treasury report?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I have, let's see, looks like I'm next on the roster here, police report, personnel, and some other insurance. We have the police report for the month of February. I show a total of 255 incidents. The way it breaks down is Village of Red Hook, 175; Town of Red Hook, 72; Village of Tivoli, 8; Uniform traffic tickets, looks like a total of 97. It's 75 in the Village of Red Hook, and there's one parking ticket there. And in the Town of Red Hook, 22 arrests, we're 22, 11 of those in the Village of Red Hook and 10 in the Town of Red Hook. As far as personnel, we really don't have anything doing in that realm tonight. Insurance, it's more budget-related, but Cindy and I met with our health insurance provider, the rep from Marshland Sterling today, and I'll fill you in more at the budget workshop. It's some interesting developments, I think. We're with, currently with CDPHP right now, and that particular carrier is looking like it might not be continuing with our type of business. They want to move us to MVP, but we have a detailed spreadsheet, and Cindy and I have to look through a little more, and she's going to do a spreadsheet, but overall, the financial side looks like our budget, preliminary budget projections are holding as far as it's nothing major as far as cost changes, but it's just, I don't like to keep flipping insurance companies on the staff, but right now, CDPHP is looking like they're not really going to be in the market for what we're buying. So in a way, I think it's kind of a negative thing, but the positive side is the price is not negatively affected. Let's see, we would then move, we have Mr. Trustee Trapp next on the agenda.
I'm up, huh?
Okay.
All righty. I don't have the flair that Judge Tribozzer has, so I'll muddle through.
You do, you do.
Stand up.
Let's see here. Then I have, I have another, another job that I do. I'm actually a New York State Code Enforcement Officer in the Town of Livingston, and they have officially requested that, that I do all that I can to flip the, the planning and zoning process into a digital form as quickly as possible. So I've been working on that, and it's kind of reignited my desire to try and work this way in the village as well. We have our applications online. I don't think they're fillable PDFs, right? They're just PDFs that you can download and then fill out. I would like to see if we couldn't take all those applications, if I could maybe get them in a Word format, I can convert them to fillable PDFs, we can put them up there so that people could actually save them, fill them out, and then that would be the first step toward getting them submittable to us in a digital form. And I think, as we all know, most every surveyor and every architect and every, you know, engineer works in some sort of CAD these days, which means that it's just one, really, a couple of clicks and you've got a PDF of your, of your drawing, which would then allow the village not to have the, the giant piles of paper that we have, and we could minimize the amount of paper we have in terms of storage. And so that's something that I've been working on. I've been searching, searching the internet out there for, for grants for laptops, and they are just not available. I don't see anybody looking to give governments money. I mean, education libraries, schools, and things like that, it's pretty easy to find that, but to try and give, you know, governments, I, I think it would be an interesting process to see how it would work if each planning or zoning member had a laptop in front of them with the documents on there and then the documents shown up here so that the audience could see them. Most of the time, as you know, when you've got a map, you lay one up here and anybody who wants to look at it just comes up and pokes around with the map as opposed to having a six-foot square map up on the wall that really, you know, your seeker forms, your applications, everything can be projected up on there, which is, I'm still pushing, I'm still looking, okay? So I'll kind of keep you up to date on all this sort of stuff. We do have, since I was certified in 2015, the in-service training lasts until the end of 2000, I mean, when I was certified in 2014, my training credits end at 2014, so the next calendar year, I have to get 24 credits, like you as an architect have to do, your training, your, your ongoing educational credits, so I have to, to work forward toward that every year. And I found down in Poughkeepsie, I was worried that I was going to have to go like to, you know, Lake Placid or somewhere up there and stay overnight, but in Poughkeepsie, they have a training coming up at the end of April. It's three days in a row, it's 300 bucks for the training, and I can drive back and forth, I get 19 credits, and you need 24, and you can get five online for free from New York State, there are three different categories that you can get. You can get them from Simpson, you can get them from NYSERDA, and you can get them from FEMA. Three different cat, three different groups sponsor online training, so that's applicable. So that's kind of nice, and I'm going to save the municipality up there a few dollars by not having to travel and all that sort of stuff. And speaking of training, spring training, Betches County Planning Federation is coming up. It's been sent to Lara, and Lara's distributed, and she's going to get it out to everybody. We have your standard courses, we always have your standard planning and zoning for all the new folks that come on, and then we're going to have some new things coming up, and George, they'll get those to you, you know, it'll be out real soon from Lara. And in the planning and zoning world, in February 2015, we took $1,015, $51 in. There were four building permits issued, no CVOs, no CFCs, three municipal searches, no orders to remedy, no stop-work orders, no court appearances. Fire inspections, I spoke with Sam, Sam said he, I think he had 90, there are 96 total or something that he has to do, so he's starting to grind through those. The report has a list of quite a few of them that he's been moving through here, so he's got his hands full right now, and he'll push through those. Planning Board had a, had a, it's like they had a little activity, some signs for, let's see, it said demo, there was also Stuart's Hudson Valley Home sign, Bubby's Takeout, it's good food, so stroll over, it's worth it, Modern Taco, which is, I think, where Terry's Big Shop used to be, and it's, people are playing musical chairs in the village. The guy that is now running Bread and Bottle, the bartender, Tommy, is going to move over to Modern Taco, he's going to be the guy over there, so he's hopping around like that, and another sign approval, and no ZBAs for you, but maybe we'll get something shaking your way, okay? And I believe that is it for me.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
On your first point, on the PDF capability, a fillable PDF capability, that sounds great. I know, like you do, we're on a municipal program, I would assume you would reach out to them and see if they could help you here and you and your fellow in Livingston, too.
I would, I would take it, I would take, you know, because it's, it's a big process, it really is.
Because it seemed like that's the way we're all headed, meaning they are, you know, it's certain things that they have already, so I think what you described as a fillable PDF would be what they were going to do.
Well, I mean, now, a lot of municipalities say, I'm doing a project for Cloverick, I have to submit 11 copies of everything to them. So if you've got, you know, 10 sheets of drawings and an application, a seeker, and the this, you've got a stack like this of paper, and not many people actually keep all of that, you know? They keep one for their record file, and the clerk has one, and she throws it out after a little while, the fire department reviews it and then throws it out. The process would be discs where all the board members then look, and essentially, two to three copies, one for the file, one gets signed and gets back to the applicant and, you know, that sort of thing, so it really minimizes the amount of paper management that the municipalities have to deal with down the line.
Because I'm using their program named Municipality, but it's Software Consultant Associates, SCA, they're right here in the chocolate factory, so if you wanted to reach out to them, too.
I will, thanks.
Thank you, Son.
Also, we'll, we'll, I figured they could have correspondence from Susan and Roddy Castillo, or...
Timely, yes, thanks.
And they were asking us to do a joint training session with the village boards.
I think that's a great idea. Susan and I, it was probably a year or two years ago, you remember?
Yeah.
We were talking about that, and they were working on trying to get it lined up, and we would share any costs that, that came down. I mean, it would be certainly a more targeted session, I really think. I mean, because what we do at the, at the Betches County Planning Federation, it's really a sort of a shotgun burst, a more of a broad brush of things. This, when, you know, you would have maybe 10, 15 people there, and you'd be able to really zero in and point and discuss kind of local issues and just be very specific. I think it'd be a great thing.
Brent, I saw you forwarded me the email. It was offered by two planners, or I guess one company, the planning company, but was there a known cost or was there anything?
We, initially, we talked cost, and it was going to be really minimal, you know? And really, when you think about it, it's just some printed materials and a couple of hours, so I think there was two or 300 bucks altogether, and it would be sort of divided up between, you know, and so, all things considered, I think it would be high-quality training for a very modest cost.
Would that be planning board and ZBA?
I think so, yes.
So Brent, she was reaching out to you, it was, did she say, state a date or?
I think it was 6th or 7th, I believe, was the date that she tentatively set up. I'll just verify that. Oh, yeah.
While you're looking, would it satisfy any of the mandatory training hours for a planning board or zoning board member?
If we so chose to approve them, I think we have that option.
Because now we do send them all to things in Millbrook, responsible by the county.
Yep, you get one, two, three, I mean, if, you know, we could, we could choose to approve a couple of, two or three hours for that sort of thing as well.
I think any training that we can offer these boards, you know, would be a good thing. I know Jay and I went to extensive training, Jen.
Every chance we got.
Eight-hour courses, which are pretty intense on that.
As I saw the email trail, it was, did you copy Jay into that? So I'm thinking we do a letter to Lara just to invite the board, I guess we have to confirm it's happening first and then, because the 6th is not that far away, so if it is the 6th, it's right around there, though, Brent, that's a Monday.
7th at 6 o'clock.
7th, 7th at 6. So how shall we choreograph that if, can somebody confirm with us, Roddy, and then...
You want to do that, you want me to do this?
I'll do that tomorrow morning.
And then get a fee and then we would invite our board. I don't think it'd be mandatory, it'd be, they need, they have mandatory training per year requirements, but they could pick where they want to make it up.
I'll copy all you guys when I reach out to Susan.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's see, let's slide to Trustee Norris. What do you have for us tonight, Jen?
Short and sweet today.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Materials management for the month of February, we sold $3,242 in garbage tags, and we paid out $1,013.64. We had 5.1 tons of single-stream recycling and 9.44 tons of garbage. For the month of April, months of April, May, and June, we'll be having our spring cleaning sale. When you buy 10 blue or red garbage tags, you will get one free. That is through the village hall only. Moving on to events, allegedly there's going to be spring and allegedly there's going to be grass, maybe. Patrick and Lara and Erica are working very hard on the spring egg roll, which will be April 4th from 11 to 1 at the Linden Avenue Middle School. There will be an egg hunt, hopefully, on dry, beautiful grass and not mud or snow, we'll see. Arts and crafts and a visit from the Easter Bunny, so they're working on that. Library report, they haven't gotten it into me yet, but last month I mentioned that they were one of two finalists in the Library Journal's Best Small Library in America and received a $10,000 award. They were supposed to have a celebration last month, it got snowed out, not surprisingly, so that celebration is going to be this Saturday, March 14th, at 7:00 PM at the old lyceum. And that's all I have.
It starts at 7?
Starts at 7, and you are to RSVP. I don't know how much of a, you know, if they're going to be checking you at the door, but they do ask that you RSVP through the library.
Okay, then certainly we'll have our posters out for the egg scramble, and I don't know if the cameraman, but we have our artwork again there, it's something where it's, you see a roadside poster, it'll go in Kidmail and all that, so.
It's already gone in Kidmail.
Has it? Okay. And I don't, I think they're talking, what, 5,000 or 7,000 eggs, something.
Yeah, it's nuts.
Amazing.
Yeah, it'll be over in 45 seconds.
But we are hoping that the snow is gone. Today's March 9th, April 4th, sound like...
I think it'll happen, it'll happen.
I think it will. I remember, I think once I mowed my grass around April 4th, one year.
Really?
A date that stays in my mind, so. As far as on the materials management, looks like February was a little lighter month, but it was a wacky month because...
It's a wacky month, it's short, it was snow every time you turned around.
Almost every storm hit Sunday and Monday, so people weren't quite clear when to put their trash out, and I think some probably held it up a little bit, kind of impacted our sales a little, too. And then Bard was also probably on break for us, I guess they're back by then. Yeah. Thank you, Jen. And let's see, we'll move to Steve on water and facilities. You ready, Steve?
Sure. Uh, excuse me. Month of February, the water treatment plant pumped 6,332,000 gallons of water for a daily average of 226,000 gallons. January of 2014 was 7,45,000 gallons pumped for a daily average of 251,000. This represents a deduction of, reduction, excuse me, in demand of 25,000 gallons per day. The plant used 50 gallons of 12.5% sodium hyperchloride in the month of February, excuse me, representing a reduction of 5 gallons from the previous year. On February 20th, Fire Department had to fight a major barn fire on which they used approximately 20,000 gallons of water. During the last week of February, one business within the village had their service line freeze. In particular, particularly cold weather keeping a sink faucet open at slight trickle overnight prevents service line freezes. That's the report.
Thanks, sir. Two interesting things. Steve, when he's reading there during the last week of February, one business within the village had a service line freeze. I've heard of one other, or two other residences now.
One of those today.
Yeah, so that extreme cold we were talking about, it's having a very weird impact. I heard of one town customer, too, where the people were away for a winter trip, and it seems like if you're not using much water as a precursor to maybe your service line freezing up, but the way it works, our mains are functioning and we bring our main, the tap over to a curb valve, and then what we determine is that, are we supplying water? And the answer's been yes, and then it's, the customer has to deal with a plumber and so forth. It's, it's really bizarre because, like you all know, the code tells us all how deep the service line should be, and one would assume they're all built to code, so that means the frost is getting that deep. It's not a good thing. Okay, thank you, Steve. We'll move to Deputy Mayor Kovalcek. Are you ready to go?
Yes, sir. I'll start with the Village Green Committee monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee-related budget accounts, our strong screen, education, $2,060.99, and $0.99 shade tree contractual, $3,331.3, and the Village Green checking account is $3,736.88. There were no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of February. The Trees of the USA Tree Campus and Tree Line USA Community Forestry Recognition Ceremony will be held on Thursday, March 26th at the Albany Hilton Hotel. Village Green Committee members can contact the... Committee members can contact either Brenda Kendall or myself for more details. I might try to get down there, or up there this year. The Village Green is currently seeking volunteers to serve by the committee. Residents interested can contact the Village Clerk's Office. And there are still two bench locations remaining without dedication plaques. And these can be purchased for $125 proceeds from the sale or use the purchase and install the plaques. The remaining funds will be used for future buildings enhancement projects. And again, you can contact the Village Clerk's Office for more details on that. The Village Highway Department, thank God this will be the last month, I'll read this, but the Village's snow ordinance is currently in effect through March 31st, which means no parking on Village streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM and on New York State highways, which is route 9199 from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Vehicles found to be in violation of the snow ordinance rule or may be towed and stored by H&amp;N Towing Enterprises located here in Red Hook at a fee of $110 for towing fee plus a $25 per day storage fees for vehicles not claimed within the first three days of being found. Also, the owner or occupant of every building and lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk is required to remove snow and ice within a 24-hour period of a snowstorm. And the Village Board of Trustees may direct the Village Highway Department to remove snow or ice left unclear at a cost of $2 per linear foot. And this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. And we're also reminding residences and buildings and businesses that have a fire hydrant located on their, their right of way, just very encouraging them to clear the snow around the hydrants to provide access for the emergency situations. The Highway Department removes snow and ice in the General Business District on February 4th. It took them about seven hours to do. The General Business District, they start around six, six o'clock at night and eight, finished up about 1:00, 1:30. Assisting the Villages in Storing New Operations by providing both labor and equipment included JS Agnes Excavating Contractor Frank Bosberg Excavating, Payton Contractor Dave Bosberg, FastTrax Incorporated Excavating, Thomas LeGrand Excavating. In the Town of Red Hook, Highway Department landed some labor and equipment and landworks, provided some, and also we did get some salt from the New York State DOT. And these services were subcontracted by the Village of Red Hook. And we'd also like to thank the residents and businesses of this area for their patience and perseverance during the operations. The traffic had to be diverted around different streets and it went pretty quick considering the amount of ice on the roads. No scrap metal was sold during the month of February. Total revenue generated for this fiscal year is $1,386.59. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September 2007, $17,563.81 has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward purchasing tools and equipment for the Highway, Water, and Materials Management Departments. And if anybody interested in building scrap metal can contact the Village Highway Department, S758-8600, or the Village Clerk's Office. And the Highway Department will assist property owners and residences by picking up scrap metal upon request. On the Intervisal Task Force and Red Hook Infrastructure Month Report, I'll start with the Red Hook Sewer Project. Sewer Project summaries, Village of Red Hook wastewater studies, and requests for funding assistance were sent to U.S. Congressman Chris Gibson, U.S. Senator Kirsten Gillibrand, New York State Senator Sue Cerino, and New York State Assemblyman Kevin Cahill. These were done in February, February 17th and 23rd. Meeting was held on February 24th with New York State Senator Sue Cerino to review the Village's plans for municipal sewer and to request funding assistance in this place at the Red Hook Village Building. The conference call was held that week on a Friday in the Village Building with the Washington DC office of Senator Kirsten Gillibrand. And we looked at U.S. Economic Development Administration grants for public works and economic adjustment programs, USDA rural development clarification on funding opportunities, including procedures, regulations, future, future federal funding assistance programs, and availability and current status of the Village Red Hook projects were discussed. A New York State Clean Water State Revolving Fund financial hardship application was sent to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation in February. The reviewed and approved application will secure the Village's portion of the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Clean Water State Revolving Fund intended use plan. The Red Hook project is currently listed in Category A and upon approval will be listed in Category D, securing zero percent interest financing for a two-year period. The Village scored 41 points on the annual intended use plan list, which is three points above the 38-point funding criteria line. The proposed Village of Red Hook Sewer District will be from the north boundary, which is the north end of Old Post Road or Route 9, extending south to Red Hook Commons and the aquarium, and from Church Street extending east to Tower Street on Market Street. The proposed system will be a step system and includes 224 benefit units. Tree growth facilities will be located and will incorporate the existing plant at the Red Hook Commons and will be able to expand on an as-needed basis. The estimated total capital cost is $4.9 million. So right now we're in the process of trying to raise grant money to lower our capital cost. Ed and I met with the Bard College Assistant Professor Eli Bucker and Pam Weiner, the PUE, and they will be assisting CPM as far as continuing testing of our, some of our test wells. And they'll check the groundwater and around the village to determine the water quality effects on the Salt Hill River. It was always good to work with Bard and get them more involved in the community. The Red Hook Water Projects meetings were held on February 6, 13, 20th, and 27 to review and discuss the progress of Phase Two, which is storage and distribution system improvements. The project is currently in the design phase as being prepared by CPM. And we're also meeting with some other consultants as far as possibilities of incorporating pedestrian amenities, bike, walk paths, that kind of thing within the road system. Right now it's just on a planning, planning mission. And we met with Brian Roberts from the Linnkey Land Trust, who's a trails coordinator there to explore some of the options with us.
Hey Brent, could I just interrupt you there while I have the board's attention? This is kind of interesting. I just came back from a trip to Philadelphia and it's a related point on this area here. As we all know, with Phase Two, one of our plans is to make a nicer streetscape with new pavement and different amenities in the section that we worked first in Phase Two. That would be making things more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly type streets, and also trying to reduce our cut-through traffic. And two thoughts, when I was in Philadelphia, I was around the University of Pennsylvania area. And you know, we have our DOT yellow signs here for stop for crosswalk, but we always complain our New York drivers are not stopping. In Pennsylvania, this one area, they have, it's some sensor. It's not always a flashing light, but when you're a pedestrian and you stand near the curb point, it picks you up and it starts a flashing sequence. And then it stops as soon as you're through. I thought it was kind of interesting. I know we're talking about doing something further down with the block grant money. I don't know that we'd have the money right now to add this concept, but maybe if we could find, at least for one. And it was not an annoying, you know, long-term flashing light. And I think this, between our creative powers, all of us, we find something somewhere to look at that.
I think what would be helpful too in the spring, we last, last year doesn't seem like the DOT painted our crosswalks. And with the 2015 Community Development Block Grant, we did request two additional signs to be placed in the middle of the road, like on the Prince Street side here. And hopefully that will help in the meantime in the interim period while we're investigating other options.
Then the part B was, again, with that creative thought process with the board, we're toying with doing something on the side streets, which would be garden for Ellie Benner or Prince Church over here. And one concept could be, there's some charts upstairs, there's some models that you might have looked at. But what seems to be the most likely option is somehow putting a delineation in paint or striping, something that we're not physically building curb sidewalks or even burned sidewalks, because that affects a lot of drainage and different things that change a lot of catch placing world and different other things. But think about that. It's, there could be some models. What we're toying with is maybe playing with some temporary, short-term models where we would use cones or paint, something where we could experiment a little bit and see what the reaction is to the art public and with people cutting through and with all the parties that are affected by something we would change there. So we're thinking, you know, tape, paint, cones, something to do something. So keep that in mind, because we're going to have to decide soon what we want to do with the streets when we're done with burying the new mains. So with that, Brent, thank you for letting me jump in.
We're looking at several options too. And we're looking very closely at the bike walk duchess plan. And they did mention several options, which were, again, involving the consultant of the Linnkey Land Trust, not only to look at the village, but how we could connect into the local town. Village Attorney of Bard College are currently pursuing with their trails. So a lot of work and we keep looking for more advice and assistance for the whole thing. On the 2013 Community Development Block Grant, well, 15, we're done with the project. Currently, we're, I don't know if we started this today. I'll send you to our test needs to be performed. This is pending favorable weather conditions, which today we definitely had, on the entire well field to determine the maximum water supply capacity for the village. This information is required for the Dutchess County Department of Health and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, water supply permitting. Information will also be necessary to determine if the village has enough excess capacity to supply new proposed developments outside the village boundaries. Current yields of the new well are approximately 100 gallons per minute, which is about 144,000 gallons per day. Actually, we'll give a little bit more than that. We're also looking at the cross-connection policy. A draft local law to amend Village Law Chapter 195 that established a cross-connection control program is currently being prepared by Rottenhausen Shaw LLP for review and implementation by the Village of Red Hook Board of Trustees. I think that's on the docket for tonight. The purpose of the policy is to determine and establish a legal foundation for our municipal cross-connection and backflow prevention program in order to protect the village's water supply from the possibility of contaminants from customers' water systems, which could backflow or backside into the public water supply. The 2015 Community Development Block Grant, which we did mention a little bit previously, the Village is currently preparing a request for proposals, or RFP, to engineering firms for the designing administration of a new and reconstructed sidewalks in the village. And this will be reconstruction in front of Cooper's Laundromat on South Broadway and for new sidewalks at the infirmary and alongside of the Red Hook Firehouse. The task force met on February 6, 13, 20th, and 27 at the Red Hook Town Hall. The following items were discussed. We reviewed the proposed amendments to the town's overlay district, environmental protection overlay district, including nap revisions, procedures for billing permits, planning board review for historic structures, and setback regulations. We did have some outreach assistance or offered some assistance. And we discussed the status of the proposed Red Hook Community Center with Chris Close, who's on the board of directors for the community center. And the Town of Red Hook's ZBA procedures were also repeated and discussed.
Hey Brent, let me jump in. Two things. You said you discussed the community centers. What's the latest on that?
Right now they're, I think the owners are still in negotiations with the buyer. So there's, there's some church and cemetery laws, which have to be adhered to. So it's currently being discussed. So the building hasn't been purchased as of February, end of February. But the Board of Directors is considering reaching out to the community to see what kind of programming that the community wants. And we've offered on the village, or on the library, libraries transforming communities cohort to assist them with that process. So we also be in touch with the Harvard Institute to prepare some questions to help them out on that front. So that's where they stand at this point.
Then another thing, Brent, you can see where he logs. He met 6:13, 20, 27 of February. So it's every week. And they meet, what, 8:30 in the morning?
Eight o'clock every Friday at the telephone.
Brent is asking if any other board members would be inclined to go and attend with him. It's primarily town issues that are discussed, but there are village implications. And it's good, a lot of those for us to be there. It's, in my opinion, an odd time, 8:30 in the morning. It precludes a lot of people from being there if you have day jobs, so to speak.
It's 8:00.
Eight AM, that's okay. But still, what's it go, about an hour and a half?
Yeah, I leave about after an hour and a half.
So that means it goes further, yeah. So I guess, you know, personally, it seems like it's a bit much of an odd time for folks to come out every Friday.
There's people that come once a month. But it's good, it's a good way just to see what they're doing. And some of it's applicable to what the Villages could do. And I've been, I've been meeting with the task force for 12 years now, every Friday for 12 years. So new blood would be good.
Thank you. I just want to jump in there too. Thanks.
All right. The Red Hook Economies and other committees, Red Hook Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are liaisons to the committee. EDC met on February 11th and 25th at the Village Building. They're currently discussing the Red Hook events calendar regarding invitations to participate flyers. And they'll be issuing those to civic, cultural, educational, religious groups, and business groups. And also the Red Hook Community Center was discussed with updates and status. The Community Preservation Fund and Farm Land Protection Advisory Committee, I'm a member of that, representing the Village of Red Hook. There were no CPF meetings held during the month of February. And the current balance of the CPF as of February 28th is $329,013.46. The Town of Red Hook zoning review committee, which I'm a member of, representing the Village of Red Hook. A DRC meeting was held on February 12th at the Red Hook Town Hall. And we discussed spike fence, a definition of zoning amendments, and also just got into, sorry, talking about vending food trucks and carts. And this is primarily, this exclusively for the Town of Red Hook. The Town of Red Hook Villages of Red Hook and Tiffany's Shared Services Committee, both Ed and I are members of that, along with two, two board members from the town and two board members from Tiffany. Highway Shared Services Committee was held on February 25th at the Red Hook Town Hall. And we reviewed the Action Plan for Implementation of Recommended Study Options, February 23. The Action Plan was reviewed for the following. Action Plan One, which was the standardization and shared administration. And we went into various tasks concerning that. Action Plan Two was to develop shared training and knowledge transfer program. And Action Three, Action Plan Three was to develop shared long-range capital planning and purchasing programs. And so this stuff is online for people to review. And I think I gave all the trustees a copy of the latest February 23rd edition of the recommended action plans and also to Dan. I gave cock to him. The Biodiversity Connectivity Stakeholders Committee, which I'm a member of, the final draft of Planning for Resilient Connected Natural Areas and Habitats Conservation Framework was prepared and delivered to us on December 15th. Now the Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook, Village of Tiffany were selected by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Hudson River Estuary Program to conduct the pilot project in conjunction with Cornell University to develop a local conservation planning framework. This framework was established for the, for enhancing wetland, stream, and forest resilience, local connectivity of wildlife habitat, connection to the Hudson River Estuary, and adaptation to these ecosystems and climate by preserving connectivity of intact, connected natural areas and habitat. Quite a bit of people participated, including Montgomery Place, Town of Red Hook, Dutchess Land Conservancy, Dutchess County Cornell Cooperative Extension. Village of Tiffany Board, Reddick Town Conservation Advisory Committee, Bard College Office of Sustainability. Village of Reddick, Reddick Town Planning Board, Cina Custom and Dutchess County Department of Planning, Development and all represented. Reddick Together, Ed and I are both members representing the village. Meeting was held in February, the village building, and various things were discussed from Bard College. Right now we're working with the Bard College Art Department. They're currently preparing an installation for our sculpture at Memorial Park on Apple Blossom Day. And I've been in contact with, of course, the mayor and the village DFW. Reddick Can and Reddick Library and Bard College, Center for Civic Engagement are all collaborating and assisting with this installation. We heard from the Reddick Library, the Reddick Educational Foundation, the Reddick Area Chamber of Commerce and the Reddick Community Arts Network. And this for the trustees and for the public, the village of Reddick received a letter from Art Smith Hudson. On February 24th, notified by the village that Sculpture Expo 2015. Since next year's show was awarded a $1,200 grant. This grant award was sponsored by the village of Reddick for the benefit of the Reddick Community Arts Network Sculpture Expo 15. That will be used towards the promotion of the projects and stipends to the contributing artists for transport installation classes. Forty grants were awarded to artists and arts organizations and Dutchess orgs in foster county. And finally, the Libraries Transforming Communities Public Innovators Cohort, which I'm a member of, representing the village trustees. We had a meeting on February 20th. And. We're preparing a working document which is entitled Take Effect of Civic Action Moving From Aspirations to Action. And so we're moving forward on that. And I believe that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brent as he went through his list?
There's more detail in the monthly reports, which could be accessed online. If you're very interested in what's going on.
Yeah, one thought, we've got, he reports on the EDC that he and I both attend on Wednesday mornings. Like, you know, that's a formal town, a Reddick committee, we sit there because we feel we're the more business economic center of the town. You know, unfortunately, most of the people on it are appointed by the town and. What we're headed is, we have a lot of new businesses coming, I think the winter was tough on everybody, meaning. You know, our merchants, we've got this new energies, new retailers and the new stores, new restaurants and stores coming in. And this week they're gonna have their first meeting of what to do in Reddick again, I say first, I think it's first of this calendar year. I plan on going, I don't know if anybody else can make it, it's, it's a daytime, 10:30 in the morning type of meeting, so it's a tough one. I have it on my phone, I think it's Wednesday or Thursday, I'll have to look it up, I can tell you, but. It's something where we incubated this here in the village and let them try to run with it. I still try to push them that they do need to do at their own expense some sort of cooperative advertising, I think. As much as all these stores and shops and restaurants are great, the word has to get further out, had to exist, so. If we could, can have a consistent message to them where, hey, if they each chipped in several hundred dollars each of their own money, maybe they could buy something and. I think if, if they approach you or something, if you guys could convey that message too, it'd be good. And they've got that great website, we're looking at last month's meeting and they are working with that calendar that the EDC has promoted. But I think if we could also push the EDC to try to find some money or something, grants to help to do it. It's, we have to keep people coming to the village center and.
Started a new program too, on Wednesdays, I think it's the first Wednesdays of the month and. There were, there were quite a few businesses that were open Wednesday night, they had red balloons flying outside and just. Kind of mark what businesses were supporting this endeavor, so. I think this was the first one this month, weather didn't really fall for me.
To answer your question, I saw 10:30 AM meeting at the Flatiron on the 12th of March. But it is their organization, it's their. It's in your interest to spend money, I think, and do something, we do happen to have a great local radio station and. That would have an interest in helping them design something, and we have an interest in making sure they all succeed, so that'd be good.
Yeah, one question, about your sewer project?
Yep.
I see the people that were funding assistance was sent out to, is there a reason that Schumer wasn't contacted?
I've experienced working with Kirsten's office on the last call around, they've been very responsive. I have not contacted, I tried contacting Schumer the last time around and didn't get much response, but I can try.
All right, I just, I was just wondering, I mean, if he won't respond, don't waste any time.
Well, it's just usually with one senator and she's familiar with our work and that's why I approached her and she's been. Extremely responsive, so we have a good working relationship with her.
Yeah, I think too, Kirsten comes from the Congress level first, to Scott Murphy to Kirsten and vice versa, and it's a, so there's a little bit of working history with them.
Chris Gibson's office has been really supportive too and actually we did. We were eligible for a grant last time for a water project which was defeated in the under spending bill. Back in 2007, I believe, but, so they're researching that grant, see if it's still available. Kind of an obscure one, which is good for us, so we're looking at a lot of options right now for funding, primarily the two grants and that's been the plea. And desire, so with the state, as you know, the state got the $5.4 billion settlement. We're trying to get a little bit of money for that, Senator Serene has been very. She was very helpful the last time around because of her involvement with Hyde Park and she's very committed to. Finding plenty for specifically sewer projects, so she's been very helpful. They've all been helpful, they've all been very good.
Maybe Brent, could you condense it a little bit, I think some of us might want to hear, the project is $4.9 million. Can be done, what we're looking to these entities for is what one would call. Ways to reduce our costs, meaning, what I mean by our costs is, you take the 4.9 million and you divide it by the number of. Benefit units, that's the people actually will be on the system, so right now, 4.9 is a big number, you have X number of years to pay it off. And it's divided by the users, which is what, 224, something like that, as far as that the.
With the benefit units or equivalent dwelling units, so a benefit unit is, is equal to. One single family house, so there are businesses that use more water than a single family house, some of the bigger users would be. You know, laundromat for instance, or a restaurant, so they're assessed at many benefit units. And while comparison, and the rates are based on how much water you use, so right now we do have a number for capital. Cost and O and M with the proposed system, it's not been designed yet. It's a big process of district formation, we're still negotiating with USDA. To see if they can offer Dutchess County Water Waste Water Authority the same funding options that the village is eligible for. That's a ongoing process that, again, the federal government is working with our local, state and county government to resolve some of the issues. Primarily as it relates to USDA funding. Currently we, because of our score on the intended use plan, we've qualified for 0% interest financing. And we're just, like I said, applied for hardship financing, we scored very well, we're trying to keep that score. But that's just for loans, so the loan that we got would be no interest attached, but in order to get our cost down, we need to get the grant money. The more grant money we get, the lower the cost would be, the more affordable it could get, so. Can't form a district until we know where all the funding is coming from.
And that's the key thing, that's why we're talking to all these various federal and state officials. 4.9 million divided by number of years divided by users becomes a dollar number, which we're trying to reduce that dollar number, so.
Without jeopardizing, you know, again, we're working with several different agencies and. You know, if you reduce the number somewhat, you'll lose something from another one, so there's a real fine balancing act and. So we're trying to get the best deal that we can possibly get, and it's gonna be a process and. It was a process last time, it's gonna be, we're a little bit more familiar with how it works and the players involved and, you know, with Steve Bradup Schumer. Kirsten Jilibran's office, you know, we try to work with the people that know our, our reasons for trying to establish this and. You know, public outreach, we have a long ways to go, we're just starting the process, but we're making pretty significant headway in a short amount of time, so.
But as far as timeline, in your report you talked about the hardship allocation, that those trigger two-year timeline, once certain, a few more things get done, so. We do have a end game point where that all goes back to zero again essentially, so. So it's not, it's not infinity, but it's, two years in this business goes pretty fast, so.
I mean, all these, all these grants and loan programs have a, have a time limit and it goes quickly, a lot of work to be done.
So when we hear his report, I was trying to distill that for everybody listening, so, but the other thing too, we're thinking. The, the current 4.9 million is designed to affect the current central business core. Philosophical and a bigger discussion would be, can we create some appendage of this that would also help the rest of the village, not necessarily with the sewer, but. We're kicking around some septic management concepts where folks would get a better deal on their own maintenance of their own septic, well, I say maintenance, pumping and so forth, because. The, the new system will involve some pumping of certain tanks and. Is there where we can broaden it, and then also broaden some of the contribution where I wouldn't have to pay myself every three years to pay. A private haul or to pump my septic, we could maybe make something that augments our sewer concept, so.
And again, this all depends on how we form the district, so, you know, there's, then municipal laws governing. Special tax assessment districts for villages, it's different than the law governing for towns, it's different for the county, so it's very important for us to know. Quickly, you know, what type of district we're forming so we can better evaluate what options are available.
Okay, anything else, thanks. Up on the board, I do have a draft which I'll get printed for you folks tomorrow, this is the cross connection. Law that Brent mentioned in his report, we've been working with our engineers and with legal. Because this is something that's required by New York State Department of Health and we needed to get it inserted into our code, so that. Makes it a local law, so what we have to do is start gearing up, one of the first steps is put the draft version on the trustees desk so you can read through it. Make your comments. I'm not looking, we're not gonna do anything tonight on it, we'll get it out to you all tomorrow and then. I'm half thinking we would look at a meeting down the road to set a public hearing on that and then go through the process, but council and engineering have. Taken most of the highlights that are required and what has to be dealt with by the private property owner, and again, this mainly affects. It's certain occupancies, not every village resident, it's, it tends to be commercial occupancies of a certain type. Where there is a history, not a history, there's a possibility that what they're doing could backflow into municipal water and cause problems. And then certain multi-story commercial buildings where there's multiple apartments and laundry facilities up high where it could, with gravity, push back into the water.
It's a whole mess.
Yeah, it'll be in the text, but you got, folks can look through, I had her clearly mark a draft so we can keep track of. What's what, but this arrived to me about two, three hours ago, so I haven't had a chance, we've been meeting and talking about it, but I haven't read this version myself, so. So we would get that out to you folks, and then the other thing that's, we have that as, I don't remember, on the agenda, and. Public hearing, 2% tax cap, what I want to do is, again, you all might remember from prior years, the village has stayed within the tax cap the past two years. It'd be our goal and our intention to do it again, but as we sit and work with the budget, we all know it's a work in progress. I think we had it up on the screens last week, last month rather. I will recommend that we will move toward passing what's called a preemptive ability to exceed the tax cap. And this year, like we said, if, if we do that, we have to be sure, if we stay within the cap, that we retract it before we adopt our final budget. Because to qualify for the tax-free credits, we can't have this hedge on the books, it has to be cleared off our books. So that being said, like, we know the tax cap. Document is actually a local law, so it's subject also to a public hearing, so I'm gonna recommend that I'll put it up for a motion that. At the April meeting, we set a public hearing in that meeting to. Hear the public's input on the 2% tax cap and then in that same meeting later, we would vote on it. But again, it's with the intention that it gives us some cushion if we have to. But it's not like we're making the move to definitely exceed it. But anyway, so I would make a motion that at the April meeting, which Cindy would be.
April 13th.
April 13th, if we had a public hearing at 7:00 PM to review a local law exceeding the 2% tax cap. Is there a second, any discussion, on favor, thank you.
Just real quick, Ed, would we also need a public hearing for the cross connection backflow policy?
We will, but my thinking Brent is, April we do other things as well. And I think what we probably want to do is have everybody read it and maybe move. Into May realm, so then, too much technical stuff there. If that works, I mean. That was my thinking.
There'll be a third one too, we've still to install amendments to the zoning law.
The EV, the, the charging station, yeah, it didn't come into me today. What he's talking about, we, we did pass that unified solar permitting project. And where our planning board can use an online permit process, that theoretically makes it easier for contractors in order to install solar. We got a $2,500 incentive grant, I don't know, has it come in yet though, have we seen, I don't think we've seen the dollars, we processed the paperwork and everything for that. Then another section is the electronic, electrical vehicle charging regulation we made. We have to do a little more paperwork to get that, so we can get another incentive from NYSERD on that. But we're waiting for a little documentation from councils, zoning council on that. That being said, we've gotten through the committee reports, the regular business, I threw in a few interruptions there. Is there any general business from the board before we go to public comment, anything new or interesting? What's our predictions, like we said a few times, the weather's warming, you seen, that's a good trend? Oh, get out of here, you kidding me, I haven't seen that. Anybody in the audience here about snow on Friday?
It wouldn't surprise me.
Would have to be, would have to be Sunday, would have to be Sunday night to Monday, if history were to repeat itself. So little comments from the board, anything general business, how about, out in the audience, what's up out there, George?
My concern is this talk now about this community center. I think the audience is opposed to it, I don't know where it's coming from, I'm concerned about it being another money pit. I don't know if it's being privately operated, or it's gonna be turned over to the village or the town. If you're getting grants, it's gonna restrict its use, kind of like St. Margaret's, another money pit. I just don't, and it should be on the tax roll, it should be told to whoever's gonna operate it, it has to be a taxed piece of property.
All good points.
We can't afford to keep giving it away, there's nothing to give away anymore.
All good points and from my personal perspective, I'll explain what I know about it, that's why I was asking him what the latest too, is. We sit at the EDC meetings and one of the members is Dr. Varely, who's buying the facility. And then looking for an agency or somebody to run it, it's really nothing directly coming from the village, and two, two things are. One is that it's currently owned by a not-for-profit church type group, so it's off our tax roll now.
It'd be nice to get on it.
Yeah, it would, and, and B, there are internal configurations, meaning. A not-for-profit has to operate and pay its expenses somehow, so whatever this entity is, will have to pay its expenses, we've heard. The carrying costs are maintenance, insurance, different things, and a facility like that, you need, I would say it's the head person, you know, it's not, not a little office or something, so. It's significant carrying costs, and the question would be, then who are the tenants, are they all not-for-profits, so, so it's. So it's not the village looking to make a community center, it's, it's this entity...
I think the village has to make it clear that it will not accept responsibility and put in there, it can ever become a taxing authority.
I don't know.
The library.
This is, so far, in my opinion, or from what I've heard, is a private enterprise that is for not-for-profit, and...
It starts, they all start off that way, it's a grand plan, and I'll speak to Dr. Verelli about it, I know him, I don't know where he, where he's coming from with it, I know he probably has a nice idea, but I just, I'm concerned with, the initial paperwork I saw on it was, it was a mixed use, you're mixing, people are dealing with alcoholics and stuff with preschool. It's a big building, different things...
Right, right now, George, as far as I know, and this is something that they're trying to start with right now, is just to reach out to the public to find out what the public wants to see in there, so as far as programming, they have a development...
What the public wants to see is one thing, what the public can afford, they don't have any common sense, apparently, to make, to say no, and I think the board has to take that position.
So right now, they're not in a position, I don't think Dee may answer those type of questions, from what I understand.
Well, George, yeah, and what we did when we first heard about, there's certain zoning and specific code aspects to this. I don't know the details of our zoning that well, so we referred the players to our zoning enforcement officer, it's, so it's part of what you're asking there, what, what can happen there. It, it sounds like nothing specifically has happened yet, and it was announced, what, six weeks ago or something, so...
There's very much of the gray stage.
Yeah.
Brett, I'm just bringing up some points, and I don't want to see taxes up status or not, I don't want to see grants where you're going to tie it like St. Margaret's did, but they can, they can move over there and buy that place and do it, this isn't a town. My little concern is it becoming, growing into a taxing authority, like the village and town have let the Blackberry do.
I don't see that happening, you know, it's, you know, because people...
I guess part of this would be our input as well, you know, to, you know, if it's requested that, you know, we participate somehow or other, what would that be? You know, we don't know at this point, I think Brett's point was taken, you know, this is so preliminary at this point.
Well, when Brett talks about aspirations and different things that the library is working on, there was one street talk, everybody knows when CBS moves, it'll be an empty building, and we're looking for what's the next use there, and a lot of the streets says, oh, the village should buy it and make a community center, and it's a great aspiration, but then it becomes, what's the reality of it? You know, is, if it costs a million dollars to buy it...
Well, actually, that never came up, that never came up in the aspiration that we're searching.
Well, I'm not saying your aspiration, but the street talk was, this would be...
Yeah, people say, well, they want the post office over there, all the things that people would like to see, and who's going to pay for it?
And our job is, as trustees, one of our jobs is the fiduciary operation of the village Red Hook, you know, like, hey, it'd be nice to have a million-dollar facility, but we don't have a way to do it, and so, but...
Well, a million-dollar facility would be nice, but did I get enough tax money from it? It's a million-dollar hole.
Yeah, but I, I mean, your point of view, there are certain technical items in there, and those are things that this entity has to deal with, but I don't see us, me or our board, we're not, we're not going to fund anything, it's, it's something where, you know, we've got our budget and we, we're pretty much maxed out with doing what we do, we, it's not anything we're looking for. Yeah, we, yeah, we look at our tax base, Cindy said it went up by, I think, half a million dollars this year, which is good, you know, it's certain things are happening in the village, whereas those years it was dropping, and, you know, quite frankly, I'd rather have fewer not-for-profits on our tax rolls than more, but, but, you know, that already is a not-for-profit, so, and, and like Brett alluded to, there's certain complications when churches try to sell their properties, it's not just an owner and a buyer, it's the courts have to get involved, and we have no idea when...
Well, churches only consult, if there's a cemetery on it, that becomes legal, which is that, you know, they can't touch that, but I've seen now lots of churches converted to houses, our businesses, our restaurants, have to go far to find that, because that's just south.
Yeah, but I think if they've got existing financials...
Right now, it's really not the village's business right now, so it's...
Oh, I think the village should at least put out some obvious problem that we can see coming down the pike on something like that, that's all. You can't stop it necessarily, but give them a little dose of reality. Yeah, everybody'd love to have all this stuff, but who's going to pay for it, who's going to use it? And I think that's important.
I think they're starting, you know, those questions are being asked right now, you know, they haven't come up with the answers yet, so this is, they're still backfiring, even scratching heads, so I think this is, the board that they've assembled is pretty good, you know, I'm sure these questions will come up.
It depends who's on the board, I'm not feeling good about it.
Again, this is not, right now, a village concern, so, you know, let the board, days listed are helpful, you know, chime in.
Well, Brett's not 100% right, it is our concern, meaning there are zoning laws that have applied to that piece of...
Our concern, I mean, as far as, you know, the operation, the financing, that's really not our concern, you know, the legal aspects of planning zone, obviously, you know, and the subscribe to the laws.
Right, but again, one of the things I mentioned was grants, if you accept grants, the entity comes in there and accepts grants, and the money's there, that ties everything up into a legal not, not to the village, just saying the property itself.
We're not pursuing grants at this point for that.
You said they were looking for grant money.
I didn't say anything about that.
Not from you guys looking for it, they were looking into options to get funding.
I don't know if they are or not, I didn't hear that.
I think it was in the article, because they're looking for ways to funding it once the seed money is used up.
I haven't heard that, but you did, you know.
Anyway, anything else from the field? It looks like then we have vouchers here moving around the table, I would remind the board to look at them and ask for a motion to pay bills after audit. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And that being said, I think we've moved through the business, I think it's a combination, we had a meeting, what, 10 days, whatever it was, February 19th to today, so we got through what we need to tonight, anybody else have anything from the board? Hearing none, Mr. Falchak, would you like to make a motion to resolve this meeting?
I would, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I would entertain a second.
I would like to second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Great meeting.
Awesome.
This meeting can officially be disrupted.